This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, first point what we will do is we will try to understand certain accounting basics which we are all already aware of. But just to make sure that we all will be in a position to understand in a clear way. We will start from the basic accounting so that those who are not in the accounting background will also be able to catch up with what we are going to discuss. Please everybody go on mute. Okay, so first thing what we will write is we will write accounting basics. We are not going to understand anything in detail in depth relating to accounting basic. But to be able to understand what we are doing in SAP FICO, to be able to understand how entries are getting created, what is happening in SAP FICO. It is very much important, it is good to have that you are starting from accounting basics wherein this will allow us to feel comfortable. Feel confident that yes, all these points which I am already aware of in my back in academics, maybe your intermediate graduation, post graduation somewhere. And you can easily connect it to SAP FICO and whatever the fear or whatsoever you have, you can overcome it and then you will start feeling comfortable with system. Now whenever we talk about accounting basics, first thing that you need to understand is you will be having something called debit and credit. And whenever you talk about debit and credit, this is quite common that during your academics everywhere you would have heard something called DR. Something called CR, meaning debit and credit. Now this debit and credit is quite common in accounting, without debit and credit there is no accounting. Reason, whenever you talk about any accounting, you are talking about something related to monetary transaction. We are talking about something related to monetary transaction wherein you are increasing your value or you are decreasing the value. This is as simple as like you are doing a plus or you are doing a minus for a value. Meaning you are adding some value or you are reducing your deducting some value. How you are going to add some value or how you are going to reduce or deduct some value in accounting is basically with the help of a debit and credit. Meaning if you do not have a debit, if you do not have a credit, you cannot record any monetary value in your accounting. Either to add something or to reduce something, you must use something called debit and credit. Now this debit will act like a plus, this credit will act like a minus. Okay, now in which scenario you need to do a plus, in which scenario you need to do a minus, we need to have a basic understanding. No need to have in-depth, in-depth understanding because you are not going to become an end user. If you are planning to become an end user, if you are working as an accountant, yes, that is where you need to have detailed understanding. But since we are becoming a consultant, to understand how accounting is performed in SAP. In order to at least test whatever you are configuring in SAP, you must require basic accounting, without which there is no concept called SAP FICO. Now here before you understand what is debit, what is credit, you need to understand something called nature of account. We will be using with different terminology, nature of account, type of account and all. I would say PNL account and I would ship balance sheet account. When I say PNL account, when I say PNL account, I am representing expenses and incomes. And when I say balance sheet account, I am representing assets and liabilities. Slowly we should start understanding PNL account, balance sheet account. PNL account meaning expenses and income, balance sheet account meaning asset and liability. Now these things you need to relate with your debit and credit. Whenever you are talking about debit, majorityly your debits are related to expenses and asset. Majorityly your debits are related to expenses and asset. And whenever you talk about credit, whenever we talk about credit, our credits are related to incomes and liability. In short, whenever you talk about any expense, expense will always show a debit balance, meaning expense will show a positive number. Expense will show a positive number, debit means plus, plus means positive number. Credit means negative, negative means minus number. Now this one plus, I would say this is a positive number. And this would be your minus. And minus is a negative number. In short, whenever you are talking about debit, debit you generally represent as a DR. Now according to SAP, your debit is represented with a positive number. Similarly, whenever you talk about credit, you are representing credit with CR, CR means negative number. Now all your accounts, whatever is related to PNL, from your PNL, all your expenses will be representing debit side. Similarly, from your PNL, all your incomes will be representing credit side. From your PNL, all the incomes will represent the credit. And from your balance sheet, all your assets will be representing a debit balance. And all your liabilities will be representing a credit balance. These are the basic, basic points initially we need to understand to make sure going forward in the upcoming sessions, you will be able to understand what are all this when we elaborate with different, different examples. Okay, and once you are clear with this, next point that you need to understand is there is something called golden rules of accounting. Everybody is aware that we have studied this in our academics. You have three types of accounting rules basically. One is your personal account, everybody please be on mute. Second one is your real account. Third one is your nominal account. Personal account, real account, nominal account. In short, any accounting entry, any debit credit that you record in accounting, this is in accounting. Whenever you are talking about in accounting, whatever is happening in accounting is going to happen in SAP. SAP is not an exception. In SAP, what you are doing in your FICO model, especially accounting. If you do not know the basic accounting, what is happening, what we are doing, you will never be able to understand what is happening in SAP FICO. Because there is no magic in SAP FICO, whatever the accounting that you are doing manually, whatever the accounting understanding that you have manually. Same understanding you are going to put it in SAP, otherwise it will be difficult. Don't try to understand from SAP, understand your accounting, your accounting will make you understand SAP automatically. If you are trying to understand from SAP accounting, that is not going to happen, very difficult task. Because SAP is not having any accounting in it. And accounting is what you are going to place it in SAP, meaning as a consultant, your activity is to understand the accounting, place it in SAP. Make sure your client business process will be met by SAP FICO. In order to do it, the common point between your SAP system, your client business process is your accounting. And if you are able to focus on that accounting, you will not be able to find any issues, any, you know, the difficulties. Easily you can start relating to the different, different points which you are already aware of. That will give you a different level of understanding, confidence wherein you feel yes, all these points I am already aware of it and this is what I am going to do in SAP. Now here for every golden rule of accounting, you have something called debit and credit. I would say debit and I will put credit. Now according to personal account, there is something called a debit receiver, you will have credit giver. And according to real account, you will have debit what comes in and you will have credit what goes out. Similarly, according to nominal account, you will have a debit expenses and losses, you will have credit incomes and gains. This is your credit. Now you need to have a basic understanding on these points. Meaning whenever you refer this accounting basic fundamental, this is only to revise whatever you are already aware of it. There is nothing that you are trying to understand from here, this is something which you are already aware of it, we are just trying to recollect it, nothing beyond that. And these golden rules of accounting also, we are already aware of it. Let me put this. Okay, this also I will put a different color. Okay, so whenever you talk about personal account, you are talking about debit receiver, credit giver. According to real account, debit what comes in, credit what goes out. And then according to nominal account, debit all expenses and losses and credit all incomes and gains. This is what is our basic accounting rules for writing any journal entry, for writing any accounting document. Now the first activity which we will be doing whenever you practice SAP FICO. Whenever we practice SAP FICO, first activity that we will do is posting of a debit credit accounting document. In SAP, once you do your initial configuration or enterprise structure baseline configuration, whatever we call it, to make sure that your settings are working fine or not. To make sure that your settings are working fine or not, what you will be doing, you will be creating one accounting document wherein you will post one debit, you will post one credit, you will verify if your document is being posted or not, or if you are getting any messages. Now here one point that you need to realize, understand is whatever you are doing, the first activity in SAP FICO is the journal entry posting. As simple as like your debit credit accounting entry, journal entry, GL accounting document is what we are going to post. Now those accounting entries are all based on or dependent on this basic fundamental. It is just that we are just trying to revise one time so that once we move forward, we don't even have to revise it because we have already recollected it. Everybody is able to think, okay, these are the points that I need to remember to understand basic accounting. And after this, there is something called you need to understand accounting cycle. There is something called accounting cycle which we need to understand. Now according to accounting cycle, there is a sequence, there is a flow which we need to follow. Now the flow or sequences, first one is always your business transaction. First one is your business transaction, second one is your journal entry. Third one is your ledger account. Fourth one is your trial balance. Fifth one is your profit and loss statement. Sixth one is your balance sheet. And this is one more point which you will have to remember. This is nothing but your accounting cycle. There is nothing but your accounting cycle. Now according to accounting cycle, what is going to happen in any organization? Now whatever the points that we are writing so far, all these points are common for any business or any company, any organization irrespective of the size. If you take a initial setup company till you know the very big company, very large industry, it is the same. The way that a company uses accounting will remain the constant in any scenario, in any situation. So every company will have a business transaction first. They would have done some transaction, sale, purchase, expense, income, asset, liability, some financial transaction that they would have performed. This financial transaction you have to account it or you have to record it in your accounting. In order to record it in your accounting, you need to follow some sequence. That sequence is based on your journal entry. Now your journal entry is based on the business transaction, meaning if you do not know what happened, I cannot write what to debit, what to credit. I am going to decide what to debit, what to credit only if or only when I know what happened. For example, I say that there are some expenses paid. I say that there are some expenses paid, okay, since there are some expenses paid, I will come to know, any expense will be the debit. I am going to write one accounting entry, debit expenses, credit some amount you are paying, credit what goes out. I may be writing debit expenses, credit cash account or bank account. Something I am able to understand from the transaction, accordingly I am going to decide what to debit, what to credit. Later on, from the journal entry, I am going to prepare the ledger account. Ledger account is to make sure at every account level, you are able to monitor what is happening. You are able to monitor what is happening. For example, if you have expenses, you must know at the end of the month, you must know on any particular day, how many or how much you have spent. How many transactions you have performed for this particular account. To monitor, to monitor this, you need to prepare separate ledger account for every account. This is mandatory, whether you like, you do not like, you have to follow this because this is according to accounting. Once your ledger accounts are prepared, from each and every ledger account, you are going to prepare something called trial balance. From each and every ledger account, we are going to prepare something called a trial balance. This trial balance contains the closing balance of every GL account or every ledger account. Here whatever the ledger accounts that you have prepared, from every ledger account or in every ledger account, there are two balances. One is opening balance, two is closing balance. Now opening balance plus the transactions, whatever you did, will give you the closing balance. Now the closing balance of every ledger account will be updated in your trial balance. Okay, now from the trial balance, you are going to prepare profit on the loss statement. In order to prepare a profit on loss statement, you must be in a position to identify what is your expenses, what are your losses, what are your incomes, what are your profits? If you are able to understand income, expenses, losses, profits, only then you will be able to prepare a profit on loss statement. Or only then you will be able to understand PNL, otherwise it is difficult to understand, meaning we may get unnecessary confusion. Just because we are not able to identify the account type or account category. Next one, balance sheet. And this balance sheet is prepared based on the trial balance and based on the PNL statement. Look at the trial balance, look at the PNL statement, accordingly you need to prepare the balance sheet. Because in the balance sheet, you will be in a position to understand what is your asset, what is your liability and what is your profit or loss from the PNL statement. Based on this, you are able to prepare a balance sheet. And once you are able to prepare these things, once you are able to understand this accounting cycle, it is very easy for us to understand what normally happens in any organization. What is the accounting sequence that they will be following? Okay? Now this is with respect to accounting cycle. And after this, what we need to do is you need to list out some accounts. When I say you need to list out some account, for example, if I take assets and if I take liabilities, if I take expenses and if I take incomes. For example, I will put asset, liabilities, expenses and then incomes. Now at this moment, we need to understand how many are we aware of? For example, if you start listing out the asset number, we need to see how many accounts we are able to list out. This I want everybody to relate yourself, I want everybody to question yourself, what level of accounting we know at this moment? And what we need to start and how we need to improve it? It's not that overnight we will remember everything, slowly we are starting in such a way which is going to help us understanding SAP FICO in a sequential, in a conceptual manner. Now make sure if you are able to write at least twenty-five here, twenty-five here, twenty-five here, twenty-five here. On an average, all these twenty-fives are equaling to hundred. Twenty-five asset, twenty-five liabilities, twenty-five expenses, twenty-five income. Meaning total hundred accounts must be on your fingertips on at any given point of time. Now these are not supposed to be repetitive. When I say these are not supposed to be repetitive, make sure when you write, you will be writing in such a way that, for example, if I write asset. I would say cash, I would say bank likewise, I will say inventory. Or I would say accounts receivable, something like this, make sure you are able to write twenty-five. Similarly, liabilities, you will be in a position to write twenty-five. Okay, and expenses you will be able to write twenty-five, incomes you will be able to write twenty-five. And when you write all this twenty-five, twenty-five which you will consolidate hundred GL account on your fingertips. Now why we need to know this GL accounts at the beginning, reason? Most of the times what is going to happen whenever you practice your SAP FICO, initially everybody will start from GL posting. Initially, everybody will be starting from GL account posting or GL posting. Whenever you post a GL posting, what normally we do is you are going to debit one GL account, you are going to credit another GL account. Now we will be posting the basic accounting entries or repetitive accounting entries. Meaning you may be writing a cash account to debit, capital account or rent account to debit. Or salary account to debit or any other income account to debit, liability account to debit. Whatever we remember, only those accounts we will be using for our practice. But if you see it from the business perspective practically, rent will be paid once in a month. Salaries will be paid once in a month, capital is invested once in a month, once in the beginning of your business. And later on, there are certain transactions which are repetitive in nature, there are certain transactions recurring in nature. Recurring in this sense, they may be recurring once in a month likewise. While writing the accounting entries, while remembering, while recollecting the accounting entries, make sure you are able to write a different kind of accounting entries. Practically thinking from a business point of view. When I say practically thinking from a business point of view, see if you are working in a company or if you are the, if you are operating a business. What kind of transactions are you going to run on a daily basis? Because you are keeping the shop open or you are keeping your business open from morning to evening, what kind of transactions are going to happen? If you start thinking slowly, you will start getting the different, different ideas, you will start getting different, different thoughts in your mind, okay? Customer is coming to purchase something, meaning it's a sale for you. How many times customer is coming in a day, you don't get a single customer a day, you may be receiving multiple customers in a day. Meaning sales can be a repetitive task. Similarly, you may be purchasing, you may be purchasing a number of times depending on the need, depending on the requirement. Meaning your purchases can also be a recurring task. Likewise, what kind of transactions will happen and what is the frequency of it? And see it from a company point of view, take any one company of your choice. And from that company perspective, try to think. If you try to, try to think from that company perspective, you will be able to understand, okay, this is how things are happening. Start from the basic, basic accounting entries only because the intention is to make sure we feel comfortable with the accounting. And we gain confidence that yes, I am able to understand whatever I have studied in my, you know, the academics back then. Now all those points I am able to relate it to SAP FICO. Because that is how you are going to work in your, in your project, that is how, that is what you are going to discuss with your users tomorrow when you are in any project. It's not that something innovatively you will do it, whatever the accounting that you know, it is the same accounting everywhere. You call debit credit here, even in SAP you call debit credit only, there may be a different terminology, but the same logic, same concept applied even in SAP FICO. Okay, make sure these fifty you are able to list out. Next one. And basic accounting entries you should know. When I say basic accounting entries, I just mean to say any accounting entry is fine, but I just want to make sure you are able to write accounting entry. In any way of your choice, there is no rule that you should do this because you are not learning accounting entries here, we are just revising, we are just recollecting our accounting knowledge. So that we all feel comfortable, we all feel confident. Here for example, if I say capital, okay, if it is a capital, I may say cash account to debit. Capital account, in any way you can write. For example, I would say rent, I may say that rented debit, cash credit. As per your choice, as per your scenario requirement, write anything, just make sure, okay, for any transaction, there will be a debit, there will be a credit. Try to understand because most of the entries we will blindly tell. Salary account to debit, cash account to credit or sales account to debit, purchase account to debit, something, something you will be telling. Now on what basis you are telling this is debit, this is credit, just list out it and then try to question yourself, why did I put rented debit? Why did I put cash credit, on what basis? Because most of the accounting interest we will be telling correctly, most of the accounting interest we will be telling correctly, it is just that we do not know on what basis we are telling this. It is just that we do not know on what basis you are telling it, but in most of the cases, you will be telling the accounting interest correctly only. It is just that we are missing that point, why we are debiting, why we are crediting? If you add that missing point, it's a minute point. If you are able to add that little missing point, you will be thorough with the accounting. With this, you are going to understand SAP in a better way. Okay, like this, whatever the accounting entry is possible, if it is possible for you to write ten accounting entries, write only ten. You don't need to think innovatively, you don't need to do anything, just see whatever is possible, whatever you are able to recollect, whatever you are able to write on your own. Don't ask anybody, don't copy from anywhere, whatever you are able to recollect, only those things you will write. If you are able to recollect only two, no problem, write only two. In the upcoming sessions, we will understand how to write accounting entries, what accounting entry is coming in what scenario? On what basis these accounting entries are coming, I am going to make you understand in a detailed way. But make sure when you put this up, try to list out whatever your understanding, whatever your knowledge at this moment. That's only point wherein you are questioning yourself, okay, I am good at the accounting, I am able to recollect, I am able to write. That is going to give you a confidence level, that's it, nothing beyond this. And this is not something that you are learning in SAP FICO. This is something which is prerequisite, mandatory skill set to be, to be held by any candidate before they step into SAP FICO. And after this, you try to write some more point like business transactions for a new company in the first month. This activity I want you to perform on your own, whatever the way you are able to write it, it is fine, there is no rule that you should do it, you should not do it. If you are able to write, if you are able to understand, that is fine. Okay, for example, you take any company of your choice, whether you take, you know, any, any, any business of your choice. You can take a vegetable business, mobile business, computer business, supermarket, anything of your choice. Take some minimum transactions for a particular month in order to begin with. To start any business, what you need, you need some money, meaning you need some capital. I would say that to start any business, I need some capital. Now if you have the capital, that is not sufficient, with the capital you cannot start the business, to start a business, you need a minimum setup. To start the business, you need the minimum setup, meaning you need to have at least one shop, one office, one setup is required. Now to get a office, to do a setup, you need to get some premise or some room, some shop wherein you need to pay some rent. For the first month, you will have to pay the rent, you need to list out something called rent. Now whenever you take any shop for rent, nobody will give you rent just for, just like that, they want you to make some advance payment, they want you to make some advance rent payment. Write something called rent, you also write advance rent you will have to pay, monthly rent also you will have to pay. Now to do the business, you need something called purchases, you need to purchase certain things, whatever you are purchasing, you are going to sell it. And to operate the business, to run the business, you have some minimum operating expenses like even if you employ one person, you need to pay salary. Right, you need to pay electricity bill. Right, you need to buy at least one computer, you need to buy one printer, you need to buy some furniture. This kind of a basic, basic points you will be requiring to run any business. To run any business, there are certain mandatory points, certain basic points that are required, that are needed for the first one month. You consider only one month, take any one small business. And for this small business for the first one month, let us verify if we are able to write down the transactions. And from these transactions, you can put any number here. For each of the transaction, you put any number, for example, you are starting the business with, let's say fifty thousand. If you have fifty thousand in your hand and if you are starting the business with it, how you are going to proceed with it? Out of a fifty thousand, how much advance rent you are going to pay? How much rent you are going to pay, how much you are spending for purchases? Out of your purchases, how much you are selling, what is your salary, what is your electricity, likewise, whatever the number that you take. And from these transactions, try to find out your PNL figure, try to find out your balance sheet figure. Meaning for these particular transactions for the first one month, are you getting profit or are you getting loss? Just try to figure it out, random number of your choice. Whether you write accounting entry or you do not write accounting entry, it is fine, but make sure you are able to list out, you are able to make something or you are able to figure it out, wherein you are going to understand, okay, to what extent you are able to understand. Because tomorrow when you work in SAP, same thing you are going to do in SAP also, if you are working for your company, you need to You need to generate a trial balance, P and L balance sheet. Now if you make this transaction, assuming that today with the help of this transaction, you are assuming that you made a profit of six thousand. I would say I made a profit of six thousand and my balance sheet I would say is agreeing at forty-five thousand. My balance sheet, a certain liability is showing forty-five thousand tomorrow. Tomorrow assuming the same business, if you wanted to perform it in SAP. This is the same company, these are the same transactions, assuming you want to use SAP for it. And when you perform all the accounting in SAP. When you perform all the accounting in SAP, now you are the owner of your business. You know that you have completed your financials for the particular month and you identified that your profit for this particular month is six thousand. Profit for this particular month is six thousand, when you do the accounting in SAP, you are going to expect a six thousand only. Using SAP does not mean your profit six thousand will become eight thousand, profit six thousand will become loss five thousand. It is supposed to be the same number because you are working on accounting. You, whether you do your accounting on a piece of paper, on the notebook, in tally, in oracle, in SAP, wherever you do it. Your number, your result is supposed to be the same. In order to get it, you need to have clear understanding of accounting. Then wherever you work, whether you work on SAP or you work on any other thing, it is one and the same. In SAP, you are not learning in accounting, in SAP, you are just identifying, you are just understanding how to bring this accounting into SAP, it is just a tool. FICO SAP is just a tool, you are just understanding how to use this SAP FICO tool to do your accounting. Here you are not learning any accounting, your accounting knowledge are applying in SAP. For you to apply, first we should have some accounting, the basic fundamentals. Then automatically everything will come during your learning procedure. Okay, this activity I want you to perform for today. So that in the next session when we connect or in the next session when we meet, we will be able to understand what needs to be done. And how we are going to do it and we will revise everything in a little detailed manner. So that we will have interactive discussions, we will have interaction, interactive session to understand whatever is happening with respect to this. Okay, on this part alone, on this part alone, if you have any question, please raise your hand, we can clarify. Venkatesh.
No, I don't have any doubts, apart from.
Yeah, all right. Sure, Sumit. Any question on the points that we have discussed so far? You are not audible, Sumit, Anand. Okay, any other, any questions on this, any doubts on this whatever we have discussed? Sadiq.
Ajay, you told like the business cycle. The first business transaction, then general entry, then ledger. Can you just brief about the ledger that is here, that how we have to understand that?
Ledger is nothing but, for example, if you have done, let's say some ten sales in a day, okay?
Okay.
Okay, now end of the day, you wanted to know what is your total sales?
Yeah.
Right, for, to identify what is your total sale for the day, you need to prepare sales GL account or sales ledger account. Wherein you are going to account sales number one, sale number two, sale number three, sale number four likewise. End of the day, you will come to know, today I have made it ten sale, sale number one for ten rupees, sale number two for twenty rupees likewise. You will get to know what is the total volume and the total value of this sale.
Okay, it means like.
And from this ledger account.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
You mean like general entry is the individual transaction and ledger is the group of that?
Correct, ledger is a consolidation of all your individual transactions.
Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah. We will discuss in detail in the upcoming sessions by taking practical examples. We will take some transactions, we will write all the accounting interest ledger account, TB P and L balance sheet. So that we all will have a clear understanding on it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Sumit. No, I cannot hear you, Sumit, try to reach on, if you are facing any audio issues, just try to reach on. Okay, otherwise everybody is correct, whatever we have discussed. Not something it is new, it is just that we are revising, we are just trying to recollect, nothing beyond that. Fine then, so make sure you work on these points, okay, I will share this Excel sheet right away. Work on these points, try to list out whatever is there. So that in the next session, whenever we perform on these activities, we will try to elaborate everything. All the points whatever we have discussed, we will elaborate in the next session slowly one by one to make sure we all will have. Clear understanding which will allow us to have conceptual understanding of accounting wherein we are relating our accounting into SAP FICO. And then so let's close for today because initial couple of days, we may be spending a little time just to make sure we feel comfortable with the sessions. Discussions whatever we are having and then we are going to have. The detailed or a little elaborated sessions in the upcoming sessions. And tomorrow we will not be having any session, Sunday as I said, we will be taking a break, Monday to Saturday, we will be connecting. Next session, we will be connecting on Monday at the same time. Okay?
Ajay, Ajay, can we get this recording session link or any recording?
Yeah, yeah, all this from now onwards, I will be sharing all these things in the group.
Okay.
Hello sir. Hello sir. When can we get the server, server sir?
Server in ADR two, I will share it because we have not yet started the practical SAP things, I will share it because I have to arrange the IDs and all and then I will share it. Have to get the IDs created, then I will share it.
Ajay, can we get a YouTube access?
Yeah, I will get it, I will share some instructions maybe in the upcoming session, in the next session where how you will, you love to create your email ID. And then I will be taking some email IDs, then I will tell away how you will be able to view the, all the recordings from the YouTube. So that from a play, I'll, I'll be creating a playlist so that you can refer all the recordings from the YouTube itself in the sequential order, right from your overview sessions. All the regular sessions, you can refer directly from the YouTube.
Hi Ajay, office here, can I?
Okay, all these details.
After this call.
Just give me half an hour time and then you can give me a call.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, fine then, so we will connect on Monday at the same time, nine PM IST.